You know what is going on today? This is a humble correspondent here, John Ross Marcus Cox with the way too much J R M C podcast. Hope everybody's doing, doing well. Hopefully this podcast goes well this time. This is my third time trying to record this one and two times ago I didn't get done in time and had to go somewhere else. And then next time I got all the way through it and the audio didn't record. So hopefully third time's a charm. But it's been a couple of weeks since I've been, uh, been here with you guys. Appreciate you coming back. It's a couple of house cleaning items real quick. Obviously all y'all, you can find me on all the social media platforms, your Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, Tik Tok, all that good stuff. Just search the way too much. It's W A Y all lowercase, the number two much lowercase M U C H. And then capital J, capital R, capital M, capital C. So way too much J R M C to search that in the search bar. And find me in all the audio podcast platforms, Apple, Spotify, iHeartRadio, Amazon, Google Podcasts, all that good stuff. Also find my video version on YouTube and on rumble. So like, share, comment, email me, text me, all that good stuff. We gotta get the word out on this thing. So, uh, at this point I've never really made a big push to get subscribers or anything. Cause I want to make sure that I got a decent product before I scale out to the masses and, uh, they don't probably only get one, only going to get one shot with a lot of people, but I feel like we're getting there and it's, it's getting too much, it's getting too close to crunch time. You know, and missing our window to make, to have an impact here. So yeah, appreciate you guys. You know, it's been a couple of weeks since I have been here to talk to y'all and over that couple of weeks, we've had some school board, school board debates here in Louisville, Kentucky and a lot of other political stuff happening and a lot of stuff coming out in the media. So we got a lot to talk about. Obviously I'm always talking about how I think I feel like Louisville, Kentucky is a very good barometer of what's happening across this country. Some of y'all may agree, some of you may disagree. But I challenge anybody, anything I'm talking, I ever talked about on here, go, go search around and go, go Google everything and see if you don't see this stuff popping up in other areas of the country. Kentucky's a pretty conservative state. I mean, we just started wearing shoes here like three weeks ago. Um, so if it's happening here, it is for show happening out in like California and New York and you know, down in Atlanta and Knoxville, and we know it's happening in Nashville and Cincinnati and Chicago and all over the place. So I feel like Kentucky's a, is a very good test case, um, for what's going on across the country. And I would argue the same thing about the state of Virginia, which is one of the places we're going to be talking about an article today. Just out to showing everybody this stuff is, if we don't address this stuff and get out in front of this stuff immediately, we will regret it. And if we allow our politicians to just sit idly by and not to be assertive and get out in front of these issues. You know, it's our fault because we know, we know that it's happening. So yes, we're going to talk about an article out of Virginia and talk about some test score stuff, um, that came, that came out. And then we're going to, we're going to recap a debate that happened between our district six school board candidate here in Jefferson County, Misty Glenn. Back on October 4th, between her and her opponent, Dr. Corey Scholl, and it was eye opening. And I know a lot of people ain't going to sit down and watch a school board debate. So I'm going to tell y'all a bunch of stuff that went down during it and I'm going to apply it to this nationwide parental rights movement and, uh, yeah, go from there. So, but let's, let's start here. So for those of y'all that are, that are watching me here, I'm going to switch over to a dual, to my, to where you see another screen. All right. So we've got an article here that is the title says, Virginia parents could face abuse charges for not affirming their LGBTQ child under new bill. Some of y'all is going to remember I did a, I did a podcast of, you know, a couple of months ago regarding the Biden administration threatening the Odom County school district here in Kentucky with, uh, losing their federal school lunch funding if they were to discriminate and quote unquote, cause harm to children. And obviously it didn't just go to Odom County. They'd sent it to every public school district in the country. If I'm, if, if my memory serves me correctly. And so, but I said then they're setting the stage by saying it's hard, you're doing a child harm by not affirming their, you know, their gender, preferred gender, or what perceived gender or whatever. But even then I was saying, listen, if, if it's harming, if it's harmful to a child for a teacher to do it, then it's obviously also harmful to a child if a parent does it. So, you know, again, we can't be letting these people off the hook. Um, and that's exactly, you know, what we are guilty of doing so, so often. So yeah, so let's go ahead and talk about this here. This was from Thursday, October 13th. This is Ashburn, Virginia from the W J L A affiliate. Down there in Virginia. So, so Virginia parents could face a felony or misdemeanor charge if they do not affirm their child's sexual orientation and gender identity according to a state lawmaker with plans to introduce the legislation in Virginia's upcoming legislative, legislative session. This is, this is absolutely terrifying. Glenn Youngkin, their governor there in response to this is these same progressives in Fairfax County actually believe they should lock parents out of their children's lives. He said, instead of parents matter rally, they think parents have no right to know what your child is discussing with their teacher or counselor. And we have seen this here in Jefferson County, Kentucky where I, and I actually all across Kentucky, I did a podcast a couple of months ago as well. Where I had a conversation with, you know, four or five teachers on Facebook and, and they were all, you know, backing this up that they felt that they wouldn't tell a parent in this situation. They didn't feel like it was their place. And that they were afraid the child would get, you know, be, would get abused or so much hypothetical anecdotal stuff. One of them even went as far to say they wouldn't tell a parent if, if a, if their minor child was pregnant and they found out about it. They said they wouldn't tell them. It was, it wasn't their responsibility. So again, if you're watching this, you can see I got it highlighted in yellow. Says, her bill would expand the state's definition of child abuse and neglect to include parents who do not affirm their child, their child's gender identity or sexual orientation. If the child shares with those mandated reporters, what they're going through, we are talking about not only physical abuse or mental abuse, what the job of that mandated reporter is to inform child protective services. Who's been told? Seven news. And then that's how everybody gets involved. There's also an investigation in place that is not only from a social worker, but there's also a police investigation before we make the decision that there is going to be a CPS charge. Then the reporter asked her, what could the penalties be if the investigation includes that a parent is not affirming their LGBTQ child? What could the consequences be? Well, she said, we first have to complete the investigation. It could be a felony. It could be a misdemeanor. But we know that CPS, Child Protective Services, charge could harm your employment, could harm their education. Because nowadays many people do a CPS database search before offering employment. That was a direct threat. She was saying at, at a bare minimum, simply get, get catching a charge from CPS regardless if it's a misdemeanor felony or whatever. People are going to, I mean, an employer is going to, they're simply going to search you in, in Google and we're going to make sure that that CPS charge pops up in those, in those Google results. And it's going to hurt you. And then since you can't feed, you can't get a job. So you can't feed your kids. You can't clothe your kids. You can't house your kids. Can't take care of them. We're going to take them from you. I mean, this isn't conspiracy theory stuff. This is just how it plays out. This is a war game here. She says, she was asked, what would you tell your Republican colleagues who say this is criminalizing parents? What would you tell them? No, it's not. It's educating parents because the law tells you the do's and don'ts. So this law is telling you do not abuse your children because they are LGBTQ. Remember, I'm always talking about language matters. They are weaponizing language and redefining any word they need to make, they need to redefine. So again, the word abuse out in the public may need, may mean one thing, but what matters is how they define it in the government and in the penal code system. So they're, they're setting us up. The spokeswoman for, uh, Virginia governor Glenn Youngkin released a statement. It's clear that the goal of the, of Democrat lawmakers in Virginia is to criminalize parents who are trying to be involved in their children's lives. Children belong to families. Not to the state and Virginians can count on Governor Youngkin to continue empowering parents to come with. Again, I want everyone to remember this. We're telling you right now that this is happening. We're warning you. So there won't be any excuses. And for the others, y'all say, well, they're, those are crazy lefties out in Virginia. Guys, Virginia was the birthplace of the Confederacy. Okay. I can go down to my parents' house and come and get national park in Middlesbrough, Kentucky, and I can put my size 10 and a half shoe in Kentucky, Tennessee, and Virginia at the same time. This is our backyard and it's coming here because these, these Democrats believe the thing, the same thing across the board, all across the country. Okay. I'm also going to, next thing here, I'm going to try to get it pulled up real, real quick without having a huge break and anything, but see if I can find it. Cause the next thing is when people start, you know, again, I'm talking about Democrats here. Going people, you know, the other thing I've talked about several times when it comes to school boards is this idea that these are nonpartisan races, right? I want to make sure we talk about one thing. And that is how again, they've weaponized this and they have created, they, they've made everyone believe that this stuff is, that all this stuff is you know, non, you know, that it is nonpartisan and that you can't, that no Democrats, Republicans, they're, they're not involved and you're not allowed to tell, tell anybody where you stand on things. And we know that's silly. All right. So I might, I'm probably going to pull it up on my phone here and I'll try to get it sent over to myself. And we'll talk about this when we, when we go back into the debate recap. But I saw a, saw a couple of screenshots here. So here in Kentucky, supposedly nonpartisan school board races. Our four, you know, parent choice, parent voice candidates, Steve Olem, Misty Glenn, Greg Pachetti, Charlie Bell would be the four of the top five fundraising, um, in fundraising for the school boards, if these were really nonpartisan. So right now, so in, in the lead as of October, I think it was like October 4th, I pulled these up. Steve Olem was in number one at 13,028 fundraising. What this doesn't take into account is the money that better schools, Kentucky, AKA the teachers unions have spent on their candidates campaigns. So if we factor that in, we go from Steve Olem being at 13,000 in number one to the guy's running against James Craig, who on his own has raised $10,000, $11,000 to the number one being $225,000. So 214,000 of his 225,000 dollars came from one place, the teachers unions. Don't give me that nonpartisan nonsense. I don't want, I don't want to hear it anymore. Stop letting them weaponize this stuff and convince you of things that are not true. I mean, you're, you're being a sucker. I'm showing you a weird screen there. My apologies. There we go. I'm back. All right. So let's jump into this, let's jump into this, um, debate that happened back on October 4th. So again, it's between court, Dr. Corey Scholl, the current district six school board representative in Louisville, Kentucky and his challenger for this, this election on, happening on November 8th is Misty Glenn, which is a friend of mine and is awesome. But I'm going, I'm going to review this, this debate. You know, thoroughly and honestly, there are things that happened in it that, you know, I don't like that do go the guy's way that I'm not in support of, you know, and I think we missed some opportunities, but also think Misty did a great job hammering home a lot of points. So, uh, yeah, so it started out here. And first of all, just to set the stage, Corey Scholl is like the most condescending, arrogant, like nosing, nose up in the air person I've ever, I've ever, I won't say I've ever witnessed, but he's right up there. And you could tell he just, he was, he was disgusted that he had to sit on the same stage as Misty and he, and he made sure that he stated as much. You know, throughout the, in his, in his own way throughout, you know, with, by laughing at her and laughing at comments and making your little jabs. And just in case y'all don't hang out to the very end, whenever this, the, the, like the slimiest, most disgusting thing I've ever, I have ever witnessed in one of these school board debates. They actually allowed his son, which is obviously an African American little boy to address Misty and question her on critical race theory by saying that he hasn't learned that in school. He doesn't know what she's talking about. And I just thought that was absolutely disgusting because first of all, I know Misty isn't trying to be hateful towards little black boys. You know, and she's not, and she's not ever trying to say that critical race theory is playing, that it's like one certain thing and it's certain, like they literally, okay, we're done with spelling. Now we're picking up critical race theory or critical race theory books. That's not what she's saying. It's not what any of us are saying when it comes to this stuff. But I just thought that was utterly indefensible. And shame on the Courier Journal, shame on Corey Scholl for allowing that. I mean, I will say this, his son was very, you know, you know, presented themselves well, was wearing like a, you know, wearing his, uh, school uniform and all that. I mean, the kid's definitely going places, you know, handsome little kid, all that. But in order for him to ask that question, that little boy had to, had to have been preemptively made to feel like Misty felt a certain type of way about him. And the people that are running against his dad had to feel a certain type of way about him. And that to me, that's sad. So again, but that just tells you the links these people are wanting to go to. So all y'all are like, this is nonpartisan. We don't need to know. Man, forget that stuff. I have no, I have no time for you. If you really, if you really want to go about things that way. All right. So I started at the, started at the debate talking about busing. Surprise, surprise. The, the, the Democrat, the, uh, left leaning incumbent goes straight to, we got to pay bus drivers more competitively. Maybe that's the case, you know, I'm, everyone would always like, would always prefer to make more money, right? But I don't think they would say that if, if it means at the expense of their milk, just their milk going, their milk price going up. You know, I think they actually want a true, um, like net increase, not just a gross increase. But Misty, you know, really drove this point home throughout the debate and did a great job on just talking about how the couple of, it's really serious issues regarding our bus, our busing situation. Number one that we're, I mean, we are transporting kids in Jefferson County. Sometimes 45 minutes an hour away from where they live. Kids are getting on the bus at like six in the morning, five in the morning, I think. And they're getting home at like five, six o'clock in the evening. All for what? We literally still have this, we're still busing this based on criteria and implementation of integration efforts in 1976. We're the only school district left in the United States of America performing these practices. So we still are, we still are acting like people in the, you know, nicer areas of town are only willing to let good schools be good in, in their area and no money's getting spent on the, you know, like lower socioeconomic areas and thus we have to forcefully integrate kids and drive them 45 minutes an hour away from each other. Whenever it's the opposite, I'm a white guy, obviously. I would, I would be, I would actually be upset if my kid went to a school where it was only white kids. I would, I would be like, I'm not comfortable with this. I need my kid to go, I need my kid to go to a more diverse school. Now my kid's homeschool and they go to a little, go to a little cottage school where they, I know there's minorities there, um, but it's obviously small. But I make sure my kid experiences diverse, you know, racial ethnic backgrounds in, in other areas. And when it comes to sports, football, basketball, baseball, like I'm, I'm not, I'm going to play, I'm going to put him in leagues where I know he's going to get to experience other cultures and backgrounds and all that. She also brought up and talked about a lot that just the discipline issues. I mean, everybody saw it here in Jefferson County. We had a dad hop on the bus and he was going to kill some kids if they didn't stop bullying his daughter while his daughters behind him hooting and hollering like acting totally foolish and not acting like someone who's getting bullied, but acting like, I mean, she was just, well, she was chirping and clapping back in the background at those other kids. Just, you know, you know, I don't know the whole story, but the way she was acting wasn't the way I'd see somebody acting. It's actually getting bullied and is, and feels, um, like they're in danger. They didn't go and talk about SROs. And for those of you that aren't aware, we've tried, we have, we've passed a couple of different pieces of legislation here in Kentucky, trying to get, trying to force public schools to put school resource officers in every school. And a lot of people think that we just passed one that making it being more forceful with them this past session. And I'm not sure that's the, I'm not sure that's the case. Actually, I know it's not the case. Um, I don't mean that in the way that's, you know, trying to be demeaning towards the guy who sponsors the legislation, which is, his name's Kevin Bratcher. He's a state representative here in Louisville, Kentucky. His original bill that he filed this past session would have been more forceful and would have required them to straight up have an SRO in every school or else. And then our terrible side of the Kentucky legislature, the Senate ruined it and gave them a, gave them a back door out of it. And we'll talk about that in a second. But main thing was Scholl stated, and this was the 16 minute mark, stated that the data suggests that having SROs in, in the building does nothing to prevent a school shooting inside of the, you know, the Uvalde tragedy that tragedy, it's a tragedy, tragedy that was a travesty, um, here in the last year or so. And I'm definitely not demeaning that. And I, I think all of us can admit it's, it appears that those, those SROs and that school police department acted extremely cowardly that day. You know, I'm not even sure that we're getting all, getting the whole story yet. So I'm trying not to opine on it too much. But the idea that I like, there's no benefit to having at least one good guy in the building with a gun to deter the bad guy that has a gun, no matter what. Like there's no benefit to that is, is, it's, it's ludicrous. Even if the guys, even if there's a chance that the SRO, whether it be a male or female is cowardly about it and runs away into the corner. If we aren't at least trying, if, if we're not at least trying to put an SRO on the building, there's no chance that they, there's, there's no chance for them to not act cowardly. So we're saying because of the chance they may, they may act cowardly and not help, we're not even going to put someone in the building to possibly not act cowardly. That makes, that's, that's stupid. She goes on to say, as he started talking about this one and all the, all that with SROs and Misty had brought up, it's how we gotta be more forceful and are disciplined and hold kids accountable. And he, he brings this point up a couple of times and I saw, I really want to highlight this. He says, we need to remember that the Jefferson County public, and it's, it's his emphasis, not mine. School system is responsible for educating every single child in Louisville, Kentucky. We don't get to exclude regardless of behavioral concerns. We don't get to put children out. We have to take ownership of them. So basically saying no matter what you will, you'll get chances or chance after chance after chance after chance, J C P S. Now I, I don't know how y'all feel about that. I'm just not sure that I agree with it. I'm not sure that we have a duty as a, as a society to educate every single kid regardless of their desire to be educated. And regardless of their ability to not disrupt and hinder the development of their peers. Now obviously you don't throw everybody out right at the jump, the first deal, but like we got, last year we had a kid that brought a gun to school and then didn't even get in trouble for it. Like I, like they never even told anybody about him getting suspended or anything. I don't believe. Did they cited privacy concerns or whatever? But it's like, well, that's, that's convenient, but you don't think they have a right to privacy on what vaccine they, they put in their arm? So Misty goes on to say, she stated that in a case where a child has proven to be a danger to their peers, they must be removed and sent, and sent to an alternative setting. Absolutely. I mean, that's, that's a no brainer. That right there alone to me is something that's like, okay, we have one candidate thinks that discipline has to occur and that like at a bare minimum, when a kid shows that he's not going to operate in a normal educational setting, needs to be sent to an alternative setting. Then we have another candidate, basically we're saying like, we have a responsibility to educate every single kid and we're going to keep pumping them back into the norm, into the normal classroom, test scores and development be damned. That's pretty much what he's saying. She goes on to say at the 19 minute mark, what J C P S has done with security does meet the standards of the law, the law I mentioned a second ago. And Misty and, and one other person from the crowd continued to try to ask about, you know, if they had school resource officers or, or just school security officers, which aren't police officers and like, aren't necessarily armed and that kind of thing. And they're basically trying to say that they're out of, you know, they're not, they're out of compliance because they don't have them in every building. And had the Senate not done what they did to Kevin Bratcher's bill, that'd be the case. But this is where I'm going to have to be, I'm having to be intellectually honest here. Like sadly, Corey Scholl is telling you the truth. Like J C P S actually is in compliance with the law, even though they don't have, I think they've got like 17 SROs out of 157 schools. You may ask, how are that, well, how are they in compliance then? They're in compliance because the Senate added a little caveat into this bill that says, but you're required to have SROs in every school, but if you can't, you at least have to submit a plan to the department of education or some other department that says, that tells us why you can't have an SRO in every school and what your plan is of achieving that goal. And when you think you better do that. It doesn't say like, once you submit it, you get to, you only got 10 years left to complete it, or you got five years left and then there's no more excuses. Right as of right now, as long as they continue to submit a yearly plan, they could have zero SROs in schools and they're in, and they're in compliance. That the plan is what puts them in compliance. It's not the SROs in the school. It's the plan. Details matter. In these, in these bills and all these little, we'll talk about the other language that is, keeps getting, keeps getting repeated. But I don't know why Republicans do this kind of stuff. We have a super majority. Like hopefully this, this next time, this next go around are actually conservative state house will say, we're not doing, picking up anything that the Senate, which is more like Rhino establishment Republicans, we're not picking up anything y'all want. We're not going to pass any of it. We'll pass zero bills this session. Until y'all start listening to this and start passing some of the stuff that we actually want done. It's the people's house, y'all. Your state representatives that are in the state house representatives in that branch of Congress, they represent us. Same thing at the federal level. Senators represent their local governments. Same way our senators at the federal level represent our states. They don't represent us. They're going to talk about, you know, working with outside of community organizations and whatnot for implementing things. She'll said something at the 20 minutes and five second mark that I thought was interesting. He said, I have tried to work with every organization that has come to the table in good faith. Terminology, people. So which organizations did you think weren't acting in good faith? Mr. Scholl. And he goes on to list the organizations he has worked with and it's pretty obvious what he's basically saying was if somebody, if, if a group came to me and has a conservative leaning focus, traditional values focused, they didn't come in good faith. Now I got a note here about, about something. This is after watching a couple of the, a couple of the debates. This is something I feel like everybody continues to like, even when they remember it, because I'm the same way. I, it's like, I have to continue to remind myself of this. But I keep hearing on these, on the board, they, in all the debates, they keep talking about the entire school district, J C P S this, J C P S, J C P S that. We aren't broken down into districts so that every single board member can worry about every single district. You're supposed to represent your constituents, your families, your students and the zip codes that you, that you represent. If that means that the majority of your zip, of your district is white, like, and people want to paint, well, you're only representing white kids. What do you want me to do? My district is mostly white. My district is mostly white. It's not racist, not, you know, it's not anything. And so I actually commend Corey Scholl because he does, I mean, it is obvious. He is focused on his district. He isn't worried about the East End districts of Louisville. That tend to historically be of the Caucasian background. That's not the case anymore. I mean, it's very diverse out here where I live now. My neighborhoods, I'm the, I'm minor, I'm in the minority. There's a white guy in this neighborhood that I live in and it's awesome neighborhood. But I'm just tired of hearing every single candidate talk about every single district. Talk about yours. You're supposed to advocate for them. And we'll talk about how the East End incumbent, James Craig, and in my next podcast is um adamant about, I, I don't know that I've ever heard him talk about his district. Like specifically ever. I really don't know if I have. So give him props there. Misty goes on to say, we don't have enough resources to get them to and from extracurriculars. When we're busing kids 45 miles away. So this came, again, we started talking about going back to busing and that, and that kind of thing. She told a heartbreaking story. Um, and again, this is why I think that, you know, the reason why she's a great candidate, she's connected to the community and was a college professor and is now executive in a business, you know, here in town and, you know, has direct reports and like, you know, has children around here. And just gets out in the community and talks to people. She told a story about two kids at Crosby Middle School that made the basketball team. Didn't expect to, but they did. And it ended up not being able to play on the team because they didn't have a ride back to school for practice. Because they're getting bused 45 minutes to their house. So they, you know, practices at seven PM instead of being arrived for school. So they gotta be taken home. They get home at five. Two hours later, they gotta be back at the school for basketball practice, but they ain't got no car. That is, that is absolutely demoralizing and so sad. How many, I mean, how many stories are like that? I mean, it's like, how many kids just don't try out because they know they don't have transportation? She said it puts kids on the street. And she rightfully continues to, continues to make the point that we can't offer busing as a school system here in Jefferson County 24/7. This, and this goes, but this goes for any, any school system around, like it's not public transpo. She'll goes on to say, if people were actually serious about community schools, because she was saying that, then we need to be more focused on community schools. So kids aren't in this situation where they're being bused 45 minutes, can't play basketball because of it. For actually serious about community schools, the people that opposed the most recent tax levy would instead get behind raising money for new schools and it, and it keeps saying this in every single neighborhood. He says, we need to raise the $2 billion necessary to build the necessary new schools. And I'm, I want to uh expand on this topic in just a second, but Misty goes on to say that we need to, you know, start with reducing the administrative bloat we have here in Jefferson County. So out of like 770 employees, uh administrative, I'm sorry, out of 770 employees in Jefferson County school system that make over a hundred thousand dollars. Seven of them are teachers, less than 1%. So we got all these administrators administrating, whatever that means, making tons of money. And she says, we need to start there. And then, but then she went on to say like, uh, another good point, like are these jobs, are they, are they actually necessary? Cause they're not actually involved with children. And she said, if you think of 600 people making over a hundred thousand per year, there's your money right there. And this was a, a chill, I mean, she'll laughed at the, at her statement and was so condescending and basically was trying to, anybody watching his hope was to make them think that she was stupid. He's, and he laughed and said, that's not enough money to build a school in every neighborhood. And so two points here. First point. Again, we go in here thinking everybody's, you know, everybody's been fit to doubt. We have to be looking for these, they're, like they try to back you into corners and set you up and they, and we, you know, unfortunately I think in this situation, um, Misty, Misty swung on this one and I think people that have, are coming at this honestly understood her point. But anybody that wanted, that wants to not like her or wants to not vote for her will, are going to think that she was being disingenuous because obviously even if we multiply a hundred, $25,000 a year by 600 employees, it's only 75 million. It's obviously not $2 billion. It takes over 20 years to get to 2 billion. But here's the, here's the problem. We gotta stop letting the Democrats, the left establish, establish the standard. So we should have pushed back on him on that $2 billion number. So that we couldn't even be subject to that. We should have fought back and make, well, I don't think we got to, I don't think we need $2 billion. We gotta start somewhere. And if we need to start in the, in the West End, that's fine. We need to go look at these 600 employees. That gives us 75 million. I think we can build a couple of schools with 75 million. And just annihilated that $2 billion standard because now, now he's going to keep saying that 2 billion as if it's accepted. That we can't even start trying to make community schools a focus until we have $2 billion. She didn't, you know, she implored him to continue looking at the money spent on administrative duties. And uh, all in all, I think she did a good job in this, in this segment. So I'm not hammering you. Misty, we just don't get a cha, a whole lot of chances to um touch bases one another. And I'm just trying to kind of giving you my thoughts and I'm money morning quarterback in here, obviously. But this has also been a great opportunity to bring up all the S R money that they've gotten. Jefferson County, Kentucky gets 1.8 billion dollars a year for its schools. That's more than the Jefferson County metro government gets. It only gets 1.3 billion. That is crazy. And from the ARPA American Rescue Plan Act. In the S R section, it was, you know, giving out to schools, J C P S alone got 604 million extra dollars than it usually, than it's used to getting. 600 million. It's like, okay, Corey, well, here's 600 million. I just spend you 75 million. I think 700 million out of 2 billion is a pretty damn good place to start. Let's build some schools. But let's make sure those contracts don't go to like Andy Beshear's cousin and all your Democrat donors, brother in laws to get built. Let's actually open them up to a fair and unbiased bid system. That'd be the next thing. We gotta keep hammering home on that S R money because they got so much money and we have nothing to show for it. I've said before, we should have NASA quality ventilation systems in our schools. I got the, in the foyer that me and my wife like requested, I'm not saying anything in here that, that, that lead me to believe they, they, they spent one extra dollar on HVAC or ventilation systems during the pandemic. Where'd it go? Where did it go? Teachers aren't making more money. Bus drivers aren't making more money. Schools aren't looking better. We ain't got no, we ain't got no new football fields or nothing. Not to mention they got even more money on top of that because a lot of the schools are vaccination centers. It's criminal. He fought back, he pushed back on her and saying like, well, we need people to administrate the district. He, he wholeheartedly supported the blow and exorbitant salaries of these people. Again, I don't know them individually. I'm not saying they're bad people that are, that are in those positions. But like eventually you can't, like in a public system where the money's coming from tax, from tax dollars. You can't simply have a position solely because you've always had it and you don't want it to have to affect the person in the community that might lose their job. The jobs have to be reevaluated. Not saying that person can't be like, you don't have to fire them. Maybe they have different job duties. She went on to say, so who supports teachers then? Well, here's what I'm going to say. If 99 and a half percent of the administrative jobs there's that are not, that are not teaching jobs and not directly facing students. If they're supposed to be administering, administering the, the district and being um helping our teachers, they're obviously failing at supporting teachers. They're obviously not helping the situation. Teachers have never been unhappier. Retention's never been I guess we'd say lower. More people have never been, there's never been a time where more people, more teachers were leaving, leaving the profession in those first, you know, 35 years. And they're leaving not because of what you want to say. The crazy parents, they're leaving because of progressive politics and discipline in the classrooms. That's what even union surveys show. So next question came from the, came from the crowd at 30 minute, 39 second mark and a kid asked um basically what, what, like which one of them wants to get reliable wifi in schools? Because currently there's times where students can't even get work done because they don't have wifi in all the schools. And he, I think he said he went to Marcy Seymour or something, Mary Seymour School. Someone please look into that and see if he's, if this is true. Again, 1.8 billion dollars a year. Is what this, is what J C P S gets. They just got an extra 600 million due to the pandemic. In the, in the literature from the Department of Treasury, Janet Yellen's desk saying what the school systems can spend this money on, they could have literally built wired up like ethernet to every student's house if they wanted to. They could have, they could have paid Elon Musk to put Starlink up above the Louisville metro. They didn't. Where did the money go? And if they can't get focused on fundamentals and realize that none of this other stuff matters if our kids can't get on the internet. Like this equity crap they're talking about and this social emotional learning and mental health, yada, yada. Brother, how about you get back to some basics? And let's get some books in these classrooms and get these kids reading, get them to do math. Let's get some internet. This is 2022, about to be 2023, can't get on the internet. That's, that's despicable. They went on to talk about the fact that a kid brought a gun into, brought a gun into the school, a school last year and didn't appear to any kind of disappointment occurred or anything like that. And she'll break, makes the point that they're, they're children. They have rights to privacy. That's at 32 minutes, 37 seconds. And I just thought that was so ironic considering they're still talking about on the Jefferson County Board, uh, whether to try to make kids get the COVID vaccine. That is, that's a violation of people's privacy. That's, I mean, I know people don't think about it that way a lot of time, but that is, that that's, if you force someone to get a vaccine and forcing Michelle to prove you're intruding on their privacy. So how's a school have the right to force little kids to get medical procedures and undergo medical tests and possibly make them get uh shots in their arm for a for a sickness that I think still killed like 11 or 12 kids in this entire state wi, with it, not from it, with it. How do they have a, I mean, like, how do they have a, not have a right to pro, right to privacy there, but have a right to privacy whenever they were literally bringing a gun into school? And possibly putting thousands of other kids at risk from direct, from direct violence. Question, I mean, that answer is, he doesn't think they have a right to privacy. It was just a easy thing for him to fall back on. Big section here, man from the crowd brought up Miranda Stowe. If y'all don't know Miranda, she's awesome. And she's a great mom here in Louisville and has been standing up for our kids for over a year now with these obscene materials and books and pornographic materials. And has been getting beat up in the media and slandered. And she's a wonderful person. And if we had 10,000 more of her in Jefferson County and in the state, we would be, our, we would be a better state for it. This, this, this man brought up like how how she could be told that it was inappropriate to read this stuff in an adult forum. But it's okay to have in schools. And so this was Sheldon's response. He said, well, the lady that came to the meeting and spoke, number one, she was way out of order and was being inappropriate and incendiary. That is ridiculous. She was literally reading from a book. It was inappropriate because it was inappropriate for the adult setting or a school setting. Number two, she was not demonstrating integrity in what she was reading. Cause he said she was slicing and splicing and dicing and putting words together. And just let me tell you that she wasn't. I can pull the, the same excerpts out. She didn't even, she didn't even try to show them pictures from the stuff. She was just reading it. If you saw the pictures, you'd want to vomit. Number three said, there's a process for challenging these books and they should go through that process. And this is the thing I have talked about with other reps. And I think this is where this is the direction the Democrats are going. They know this stuff's ridiculous. And so they, they're going to try to talk, they're going to figure out a way to get Republicans to buy in and thinking that, well, what needs to happen is there needs to be a a thorough challenging process for these books. Homie, I ain't trying to play that. Because they just went under, underwent this process and it took them like four, five, six months to decide to leave it in there. One book. And if they would have taken it out, guess what? All, some Charlotte and just got to go in there and convince a librarian to put another book in there because it make, it's LGBTQ and little gay kids, all they think about is, all they, all they think about is blowing other people and having sex. Oh gosh, they're eight, but they're all they think about saying, that's what they think about these kids. It's, it's absolutely terrifying. It's so immoral. Convince a librarian that it's the only way to make these kids feel safe and comfortable. So we gotta put it in here. Then you find it, takes another six months, they decide to keep it in there. This doesn't even take into, take into account the fact there's tens of, probably hundreds of books in there right now that have just not been located yet because people haven't read them. And they're garbage. So nobody's going to read them except for the one kid that picks them up. It's nine and sees, picks it up and sees a little, little boy blowing a grown man and thinks it's okay. And now that doesn't play itself out and um have the negative connotation for another 10 years. Because they're not going to experience sexual interactions until then, and then it manifests itself into a terrible, in a terrible way. And no one ever even knows it. But that was the reason. Cause their mind was warped on what healthy sex is. Misty did hammer him on it. She hammered him on it. Had a good statement, I felt like. And even asking like, would you have read this in your church? Cause we all know he wouldn't. And he said, my church is not a public school. And he laughed, he laughed at her during, during saying that. Like that, like that a school with a bunch of little children in it shouldn't be, shouldn't be treated with the same type of respect as a church. I'm not even saying you need to have your religion in there, but the same way you don't cuss in a church, you don't need to be cussing in school system. And I cuss a lot. And my preacher's probably listening to this and I'm just telling you, it's like, don't, like, I can't. I wish I was a better person so I could speak upon, speak up on stage if you ever needed me to, but like probably not the right guy. Same way you, you shouldn't be pulling up porno on your personal computer at home or in church. You shouldn't be pulling it up in schools. Same way I don't want my kid reading like the kind of garbage out, at, at home. Or at the park or at, or in church. I don't want to read in school. So I want to show the same respect that we would show whatever, whatever is our holiest of places. I want the same respect showed in schools. Now here's the one thing. Again, some more feedback on like, I think we can improve our messaging going forward. And I know that some of our candidates are being pressured to seem sensible and reasonable. So again, that's what leads Republicans to using these stink, these stupid terms that, that make it impossible to legislate. But when in response to this stuff, we, you know, Misty basically said, I just don't like, um, I'm sorry. She said, I just don't think stuff should be in basically in libraries that isn't age appropriate and school appropriate. Misty, I don't like those words. I'm not being, I'm not being extremist here. I'm just being concise and thorough. And I think that, I know you'd agree with what I'm about to say. And I want to, I want to talk to you here and I want to say, listen, just you can say this and even if other people get mad at you over it, I'm telling you, the people voting for you are going to respect the crap out of you saying this. I don't, I throw out the words, I just want stuff to be educationally appropriate and age appropriate. Cause the problem is who determines that? Cause the problem is who determines that? Even if we like the person in there today, three years from now, we might not. And it takes 10 years for this stuff to play out before it even, we even realized that this stuff's occurring again. And you've got another generation of children that are being exposed to something that such and such think thought was age appropriate. But we certainly didn't, wouldn't have, you know, or we continue to challenge this stuff and they can, and someone that has been hired and trained by the woke left, mate, you know, finds that in their expert opinion. We all know the, the, you know, the, this expert quote unquote, air quote deal, that deal is here. This war on the normal people by saying everyone else is experts. Some expert deems it age appropriate and then like, okay, this is over, your, your, your challenge is over. So let's throw that word out. I know you're okay with that. And I just want to empower you to do that. Again, I thought you did a great job on in the, in that segment and definitely came out on top. But like, again, let's get a, let's get a headline and get the Courier Journal to say, Misty Glenn is anti-LGBTQ and does, and doesn't want age appropriate stuff in libraries. It's me, sign me up. Because I'd rather less stuff get in than more filth to get in. And if the, if the media labels you anti-LGBTQ or a bigot or whatever, anybody independents and over to the right, no. I probably should consider this person now and go see if this is really what they're about. Cause they're prob, they're, they're probably lying and just being like hyperbolic. She was then asked about, she thought there should be culturally sensitive curriculum as it pertains to history, government, social, social studies. She said, we should be, we should, absolutely. We should be teaching it in a, in a way, not, not promoting racial division. And that's, I mean, you know, I think that was the perfect way of saying it. But like, these people, they actually think that if, that when you say that, that you're saying that you shouldn't be taught like, cause they don't think there's any way to teach it that wouldn't promote racial division. And in many cases, they want the racial division. They want white people and white kids to feel bad about the past. And in turn by trying, by doing that, what they also do is make the minority kids, that's like, think like, oh gosh, well they, they thought that way about, they, they, that entire generation of people for hundreds of years thought, thought we were lesser humans. Oh gosh, like they, you're internalize that and it's, and it's, it's asinine. People don't think that. We should be teaching kids. America was founded on the principle that all men are created equal. We have failed to live up to that in some, some ways. Absolutely totally fed up to live, to live, totally failed to live up to it. In other ways progressively gotten better, but the, but the premise is the same. It's still in writing. The constitution says what it says. So I, I, I think she should go a step further and just, you know, just drill it on down a little bit more. Shouldn't be promoting racial division. You can teach whatever you want. As long as it doesn't disparage the fundamental, fundamental American value of equality. And as long as it don't advocate, inculcate, or promote, you know, bigotry or revisionist history or, you know, critical social, social justice warrior stuff, teach it. And then we, obviously we need to decline, we need to define what bigotry and revisionist history and critical social justice is. And we, we will on another podcast. I felt like the questioner and the, and it's like all this conversation. At this moment, it was like 38 minutes in the, into the debate, it just seemed so condescending. Because even the people against Missy and for Corey Scholl, it just seemed like they were basically saying there's no way that a parent would want their kid to go to a school in the West End. Okay. And without teaching this stuff. I mean, it's actually the, the segment didn't, sometimes it didn't make sense a, a little bit at that, at that area. Oh, you know what? Actually, I'm, I'm, I skipped a question. So after that question, there was a question from the crowd regarding neighborhood schools. And parents, you know, not wanting to, not wanting to send their kid to the closest school. When the previous school they were in that was further away, uh, had filled up with neighborhood schools. So he's going back, we'll make some neighborhood schools. So this is actually a very important section. So I'm sorry, I had a little confused there. And so I wanted to preface this with this entire, this entire back and forth from the crowd and Corey. It's like, it just seems so condescending because it seems like they're making the argument that there's no way we could possibly make West End schools, which is why our poverty, our lower socioeconomic and predominantly African American area here in Louisville, Kentucky, for those of y'all that aren't from here listening. There's no way to ever, to make those schools desirable. And it's like totally unrealistic to think any parent, whatever choose their kid to go there. And that there's no reason to even try until, again, until we spend $2 billion building new schools. And so that brings me to my next point. They kept talking about school choice and, and another woman asked this later on, so I'm going to lump this all into one. So this was at like the 40 minute mark and then this, another woman brought it up at the 54 minute mark. Regarding school choice and she, she asked the 54 minute mark, like, how do you feel about money that has been set aside for public schools? Being used for private schools and being able to deplete the funds? Start with this, preface with this, the current legislation in Kentucky, it's in, it's, it's Supreme Court now for school choice would allocate zero pennies from the public school funding that won't, the 1.8 billion that Jefferson County gets and then the, hell, who knows how many billions that the state, the entire state's getting. I think it's like five billion or something. None of that money would go towards public schools or private schools. It literally would be private donations being made in a tax deductible manner and giving kids scholarships to be able to choose wherever they want to go to school. Or letting them choose to homeschool, letting more parents choose to homeschool. But they're starting, the left is starting to do this. They're starting to, they know, they see the way the winds are blowing and they're starting to come, try to conflate school choice as really meaning the choosing of what public school you want your kid to go to. Like we're going to go anywhere you want within the public school system. We need to be very clear. School choice and the public school system. You're right. As of right now, funds can't be intermain, can't be exchanged. But there is a school choice inside the public schools. Nor does the public school mandate, does the constitution of the state Kentucky mandate that you should have that? Section 183 in the Kentucky constitution said the gen, says the general assembly shall, by appropriate legislation, provide for an efficient system of common schools throughout the state. Efficient is the word they use. Language matters. There's nothing efficient about saying in an area as big as Jefferson County, every kid can choose whatever school they want to go to, regardless of how far away it is. And we have to bust into that school. Cause they don't have a right to, nobody has a right to, has the right to a ride to school. It's nowhere in that, it's nowhere in anything. But they keep trying to like equate this like as if, as if school choice can mean going to pu- private school or choosing wherever you want to go in public school. It's not, I'm not for that, that kind of school choice. I'm not. If you live in my neighborhood, but you want to go to school in the South End, like I know what traffic's like in a car, in a regular car trying to get over there. Like I can't imagine how long it takes on a bus. There's no way to efficiently administer that to where every kid can choose where they want to go every year. Okay? Nor does it promote community, friendship, relationships amongst the parents in the community. No, and nobody does it, allow children to get to know each other and play on the same, you know, different sports teams, see each other at Walmart. You know, all that, that, that doesn't allow it. But I also want to bring up this point, this, this kept coming up and I'm not from Louisville originally. So like, I got a lot to learn on this. But I don't know what Jefferson County is doing and I see, I see conservative parents buying into this. And I see left wing parents buying into this and just, it's like, it's accepted that the school system can be how it is. Jefferson County, both parties, both, both party parents that are in this system, your kids are in the system. The current makeup is asinine. This whole like, I think it's called, they're called magnet schools where they teach certain things. I'm going to tell you a little story. I heard this from one of the other debates where one of the challengers to James Craig, Gay Edelman brought up that her son had became a Navy pilot because of the aviation program at the Jefferson County Magnet School we went to. Stay with me here. So the percentage of children K through 12 in Jefferson County that are reading at grade level, pick, you pick the grade on average is 45%. The percentage of black kids reading at grade level is 29%. If three out of 10 black kids are, are, is all they can read at grade level, the first thing that we cut, the first thing we cut is an aviation program. An efficient school system ain't pumping pilots out of it. So I'm about to go and start doing research on what other programs, what other, what these magnet schools are, where like they do certain things. And we got to get back to basics, people. We can't read and write. Only six in 10 white kids can read, can read at grade level. If you go over to math proficiency, 51%, I'm sorry, 36% of all kids are proficient or proficient math. 51% of whites, less than two in 10 black kids are proficient in ma- in, in math, in grade level math, meaning grade level. But we have an aviation program. Now I'm, I'm so excited for Gay Edelman's son that he's a Navy pilot. That is awesome. Thank you for your service. But if retrospectively doing away with aviation program means that you don't end up being a Navy pilot, I would be totally okay with that. If it meant that even five out of 10 black kids can read at grade level, it is worth you not becoming a Navy pilot. If the reason you became the Navy pilot is because of Jefferson County Public Schools. Now, I think this woman equated you becoming a Navy pilot with this magnet program in a way that is totally ridiculous. Like you became this only because you're in this, this magnet program. If you're a Navy pilot, you probably were going, you were, you were driven and you was trying to be a Navy pilot. Like you're crazy in your head. Like you were, you're disciplined, you're motivated, you're focused, fundamentally sound. Okay. We can all see that ain't Jefferson County's public schools and that ain't, that ain't no schools in Kentucky, but it's no public schools in the rest of the country either. None of the, none of the, none of the public schools in this country are fundamentally sound. So they ain't ma- they ain't pumping out Navy pilots. But if we have other ones that are art focused and paintbrush focused, cut it. If we have other ones that are acting and violin focused, cut them. If we have other ones that are, I'm trying to think of something that, uh, maybe I can show that I'm willing to do something that I'm, that I like as well. Um, I can't think of nothing because I'm kind of a loser. Comes, it comes to hobbies. But like, our society has to realize, we got to get off the periphery of things and get back into the trenches. There's never a time where like, it's not important to keep making your bed. Time is finite, resources are finite. We have a teacher shortage, we have a bus driver shortage. Can't have an aviation program. Can't. They went on to talk about recruiting and retaining teachers. Misty did a great job here saying that we spent $18,000 per student here in Jefferson County per year, which is more than like our, one of our best private schools. She discussed, we need to pay increases and that we need to get rid of restorative justice, which is, you know, basically not being willing to discipline kids that aren't, just don't want to be at school. Scholl went on to say, need to decrease teacher workload. How can we assist teachers in their workload? Need to raise teacher salaries and be paid the same as their educational counterparts. I'm tired of this, of this argument because again, they're, they're trying to reinforce this, this university model. Like going and getting stupid meaningless degrees doesn't guarantee you more money. I know that's something, that's something dealing with teachers, but it's just a bigger point here. But in regards to the teachers, let's not talk like the ma- these master teachers are getting and rank ones that it's coming out of their po- own pocket. I'm pretty sure most school districts pay for most of this stuff. So you want them to pay for it and you want to automatically get more money, substantially more than you're already getting. Just because you have a degree, but like, okay, so let's just not pay for it then. You're obviously not, you're not grateful for that, that, that got paid for. So you just pay for it and then we'll pay you more on the back end. Pick, pick which one you want. I also want to say this about Jefferson County specifically. So urban areas versus rural areas. My mother's a retired teacher. When she retired, she had a rank one, 30 years, 30 years in teaching, in, in teaching field. She retired at $62,000. In Jefferson County, you have a rank one, you're making like 95 grand, 85 grand. And the cost of living up here ain't that much more than in the rural parts of the state. Cause this ain't 1850 anymore. Cars cost the same, energy costs the same, gas costs the same, groceries for damn sure costs the same. Sometimes more, it's harder to get them. So I'm tired. I mean, like the teachers, y'all need to realize you're starting to, your, the public sentiment is turning and people are getting tired of the pity party. Like we can't even acknowledge the things we agree with you on because you just like give you an inch and you take a country mile. You do a great service to this country. You do. It's appreciated. But sometimes something's got to give. Touch on the scene material stuff a little more. But I'm, so I'm going to go back to, this is my last two points. So at 57 minutes, 24 seconds, Corey Scholl says, this is his words, "There is an increase in homeschooling because there is a segment of the population who have been convinced by, by boogeyman's like CRT. And so they keep their kids at home because they're afraid of them coming into contact with the world of ideas." Everyone listen to this, not all y'all have kids in the school system. That is what he thinks. And that's what the left thinks of any parent that chooses to educate their children in any other way than exactly how they, that, that the left thinks they should be. I homeschool my kids. He paints such a broad brush. This dude thinks that I'm afraid of my kid coming in contact with the world of ideas. Brother, I will stack up my community involvement with yours from a diversity standpoint all day long. I serve and volunteer with children of all backgrounds. Socioeconomic, cultural, racial. I've, I forego time with my own white children to coach all kinds of young, young, young boys, young men that aren't the same skin color as me. And I do it because I know it benefits them being around me. And I know it benefits me and my son and my children to be around them. It's not because I want to check a box and say I was around some black kids. It's because I know there's actually intrinsic value. And if we truly want a colorblind society, we have to intentionally live and break down walls and barriers between our communities. I saw nothing come out of your mouth, Corey Scholl, that makes me think that you desire to do that whatsoever. And if you really think that about, about parents at homeschool, shame on you. Cause I know plenty of black families that choose to homeschool for various reasons. I've done, I did a podcast on it. Homeschool my kids because at the very beginning, you wouldn't stop putting a diaper on my, on my son's face. You are directly responsible, Corey Shoal, for even fewer young black boys being able to read than were, than were before this pandemic. That is your fault, yours. You can't say, well, we didn't know it was going to happen because of, because of, because of COVID. You knew because we told you. So shut your mouth. If you've got a problem with me saying that, say something on, on my, comment on here and brother, we'll, we'll meet up. I'll, I'll go to coffee with you. Let's go talk. I'm not scared. I'm not a bigot. I'm not stupid. I'm, I'm not uneducated. That's what he thinks of people. If you homeschool, it can only be because you're a racist, scared of the boogeyman and CRT and your kids being told the truth about history. That's what he thinks. Does the, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that's, that, that was all I needed to hear for the whole debate was that was those lines out of his mouth. And that brings me back to the, the, the school choice discussion. This is the 50, at the, again, at the 54 minute mark, when the woman eluded, alluded to the fact that people wanted to take public school money and give it to private schools, yada, yada. Here's what I want to tell, what I want to tell this woman. And she obviously was an elderly African-American woman. So I'm saying this with, I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I would respect her as an elder. It's like I would any one else. I'm going to say this directly to Corey Shoal and the entire public school system, especially here in Jefferson County. And Misty, I think this is something that'd be great for you to bring up to him and say to his face. I wish I could. First of all, it's not using one single dollar from the public school system for private schools. Okay. But by not allowing everyone to choose, all the parents to choose and take their kids' funds to whatever school they want to choose, whether it be religious or non-religious or homeschool or cottage school like I do, or a public school or whatever. You're only keeping poor kids and minority kids from choosing. You're not getting one over on the, at the white people like you think you are. They're already going to private school. The rich white kids are already there, dude. So fight all you want and say you're left wing, left wing, uh, bullet points all you want. You're only preventing kids in your district from choosing and having the best opportunity for success in their lives. That's all you're doing. So the same way it's your fault that fewer and fewer black kids are able to read at grade level because you shut them down from, couldn't, couldn't go to school for two years while their rich white counterparts were in school and private schools. The same way you are responsible for that and that is your fault. It's also your fault that our school system that is at a, on a, by a vast majority number minority is forced into a failing public education system. Whenever we could give each of those families $18,000 a student to go to school, wherever they wanted to go, and this, and the, and the state wouldn't be out one more cent. That is what needs to be said to him. Cause it's the truth. The kids you don't want to go private school are already private school, bruh. They're already there. So this idea that you're, you're, you're helping anyone by not allowing school choice to be implemented is laughable. You're helping one, one group of people. And if I was the candidate against you, I would look in your eyeballs and say, say something about it. Like, tell me I'm wrong here. You're helping one group of people. And it's the most corrupt industry and segment of an already corrupted, like segment of the economy, whatever you want to call it, which is the, the, the bigger lobbies, the lobbyist industry in general. The teachers unions are some of the most corrupt, hateful, uh, the non-useful groups in this country. And that's the only people you're helping. And you want to know how I know you're indebted to them, Corey? I know you're indebted to them because you have made zero phone calls to raise one single dollar from any one person, any one constituent donor. You've raised $0. Do you see that? See if I can get you to see it. Right there. Where are you at? Boom. Corey Shoal, $0. Okay. You've raised that. Look at three down on this, three down. You, but you've gotten $156,000 from the teachers union here. Zero versus $156,000. So there is no individual that can even call and say, hey, I donated you a dollar and that was 1% of my savings account. You owe me this vote. Not one person can say that. Every favor to be called in on your behalf will be payable to the Jefferson County Teachers Union, Jefferson County Teachers Association and Better Schools Kentucky. Shame on you. And great job, Misty Glenn. Let's keep knocking on doors for her. Let's get her, let's get her on the board and get this dude off, out of it. I'm going to end, I'm going to end there. I appreciate all y'all listening. And I'll, I'll be back here shortly to, uh, recap another school board debate. So till then, have a great rest of your day.